Yeah.
All right, we'll go ahead. Call the meeting order here. Uh, June twenty first at about two o'clock. Uh, we got planning commission meeting. Uh, one item on the agenda. Let's do a roll call.
Uh, Ryan Carpenter or Commissioner Carpenter.
Either way, here.
Commissioner Hartwig.
I'm here.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Here.
Commissioner Sager.
You coming? Say yes.
All right, he's here. Commissioner Johnson's not here and Commissioner Perkins.
Here.
Okay, it looks like we have a forum. All right, uh, first thing on the agenda is the approval of the May twenty four, twenty twenty three meeting minutes that are in the packet.
Move to approve.
We have a motion and
Second.
And a second. Any questions or discussion on that? Doesn't appear so. All those in favor, uh, let's go raise your right hand if you're in the room and then say aye if you're on Zoom.
Aye.
As unanimous.
Okay. Uh, we got commission business, uh, which is a park and rec facilities discussion. Who's gonna lead that?
Is this um, on the agenda before? Well, first of all, can you guys turn on the video also? And then, and I can do the same.
Yeah, and it's on the agenda as the next item of business, but we want to do the public hearing first and kick this to the end.
Yep.
That makes more sense.
Yep, and I mean, I'll, I'll just say right now, we can totally discuss this more, but we are understaffed and absolutely swamped and we haven't had time to prepare any information, you know, include any information in your packet or really prepare anything for this, so we can totally discuss it, but we don't have any, you know, examples of what other jurisdictions do or anything like that.
Can we just take a motion to, uh, table it for till the next meeting?
Sure, uh, Mr. Chair, so motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, uh, to table it until the next meeting, so, uh, off the hook.
Cool, thank you.
All right, perfect. Well, let's go with consensus on that. Um, so let's go into the public hearings then. Uh, first item of business, uh, actually looks like the application is withdrawn. So just making sure the numbers are in the, uh, naming conventions, right? Partition twenty twenty three dash zero four dash LP. The applicant Mira Karlamov is proposing a two lot partition of a point four nine acre property at seven forty one southeast Forest Glen Road. And with that, let's do a staff report.
All right, I'll be presenting that. Good afternoon, all. Thanks for coming. Really, that was okay. Show my screen. All right. Okay, so I will present the staff report on file twenty twenty three dash zero four dash LP, the Forest Glen Road partition. Okay. Okay, so the applicant is actually with us today. It's, um, Mira Karlamov. And it's my understanding that, that she owns and lives on the site property. Um, the proposition is a two lot partition of seven forty one southeast Forest Glen Road at the tax lot ID identified there. It's about a half acre lot. And it's designated both R one and R two, and I'll go into that more a bit later. Okay, we look at the, looking at the cop plan map. You can see it's just up the hill from downtown. It's just right up there. You can almost see it from here. And zooming in, here's an aerial view with the proposed partition line. Okay, just some details about the application. Um, this site property has two zoning designations. Um, it's R one on the west side. That's the undeveloped side and on the east side, which is developed. That's where the home is presently located. It is R two. And here's some zoom in of the city's cop plan map showing the R two section here. And then the remainder is zone R one. And here's the aerial again. Super, yeah. And I've just labeled here our one and our two, just so we're really clear on that. Um, and then wait, yeah. Sorry, go back, lost myself. Okay. So the, yeah, I wanted to talk a little bit about the west portion that's designated R one. Um, it takes frontage from southeast Espinoza Street. And um, both the R one and the R two have minimum lot size requirements. The western lot that's R one would need to contain at least seventy five hundred square feet and the eastern lot that's an R two would need to be at least five thousand square feet. And based on the location of the proposed partition line, uh, staff finds that these criteria can be met. And also, uh, along southeast Espinoza is a sewer pump station. It's adjacent to the site property. And it's located about halfway between the site's southern border and it's the northern property vendor. So here's a picture from southeast Espinoza looking south. And we can see that the street doesn't continue south up the hill past the pump station. And due to the location of the pump station and the infeasibility of developing street or furniture improvements beyond that station, uh, city engineers recommended a condition that the access point that is like the driveway for the new western lot be located along the span of the existing curb. That's the part in yellow that's to the north of the pump station. And here's another aerial view. And on the left, you can see the pump station about halfway up. And then the yellow, um, lot access area that's recommended. Okay, so besides the details I just went over, this was a fairly straightforward partition proposal. Um, there's only six conditions recommended by staff. So the first one summarizes the main elements of the partition. Uh, it also requires that the western lot and R one contain at least seventy five hundred square feet and the eastern lot contain at least five thousand square feet. Uh, the second condition provides sewer and water be provided to each parcel. Um, the eastern lot is already served by city water and sewer, so it just concerns the undeveloped western lot. And it also states that additional street curb and sidewalk improvements are not required due to the location of the pump station and the steep topography. And the third condition is pretty standard. It just requires a ten foot public utilities easement along the western lot fringe. Okay, I'll number last three. Uh, the fourth condition requires that access to the western lot be located to the north of the pump station as shown in the previous map. The fifth condition concerns general requirements regarding legal descriptions and plat recording and prohibit sale of any lot before plating. And the sixth prescribes the timeframe for recording the new plats, which is two years. All right, and next steps. Um, so we can hear applicant comments if she has any, um, any public comments, if there are any of those. Um, planning commission can ask questions of the staff or the applicant. And then planning commission will discuss and make a decision.
Okay.
All right.
Commission, is there any questions at this point in time? Doesn't appear so. Tara, do you have any, um, the link there?
She's not.
Sorry, sorry. No, I don't. I just couldn't figure finding unmute. No, it's all pretty straightforward.
Okay, sounds good then. Let's go ahead and we'll jump out of the, uh, planning commission meeting then. We'll open the public hearing. Uh, we can ask the applicant, come to the mic, introduce yourself if you choose to do so. Uh, you can just kind of let us know your thoughts on the project. Again, if you want, you don't have to though. And since you're the only one in the off, uh, in the audience here, uh, well, has it have you come up and then we'll make a decision probably.
Um, my husband, I own the property. He's on Zoom. He couldn't make it today. Uh, we just thought of this idea to, um, to split the lots and see what we can do from there and hoping that the process, uh, won't be as difficult as what we've heard.
Okay. Perfect. Any questions for the applicant?
Just one. You're not planning on parking on the Espinoza. I take it you're gonna have all your cars off the, the access road.
Yes, no, we haven't parked any vehicles on Espinoza.
No, I mean your future. You're gonna build on this lot of the R one.
Um, we don't really have plans what we're gonna do in the future. Um, for now, we're just wanting to see what the process is and
Just splitting the lot and see what happens. Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, since we don't have anybody else, uh, does it look like there's anybody else on the Zoom link or Teams link, whatever that is?
I'm, I'm here if you guys have any questions for me.
I think it's pretty straightforward at this point in time. We appreciate you jumping on there. If, if you don't have anything, we'll jump into the, uh, regular planning commission meeting here and probably discuss a little more than make a decision.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. So with that, let's just, uh, go ahead and close the public hearing and go back into the planning commission meeting officially. Uh, there's our next steps. Um, this is our decision. Uh, if, if it gets appealed, um, it gets substantially more difficult than drawn out, right? Cause it doesn't go to the city council. Am I, am I right on that?
Taylor can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that it gets appealed to the city council if it gets appealed at all.
Okay. Well, we need a motion and a, uh, second, one of those options.
A move to approve.
With the
With the conditions.
Okay, we got a motion with the conditions.
Second.
And we got a second. Do we need to discuss any further? Okay, uh, if you're in the room here, let's raise your right hand if you're on Zoom.
One question.
Oh, one question.
Absolutely none of this partition has anything to do with the end of the road that you can't park on it anyway. It's already designated with yellow striping and
Yeah, and I would assume
It's just a turnaround for the fire department and anybody else going up that road.
And I would imagine if the future development actually happens beyond this partition, that those would be laid out with a delay permit or
That'd be laid out the next meeting, yeah.
Yep. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Aye.
All right. Pass unanimously. So, uh, from here, the staff will take care of all the official documents. I'd probably be called down to sign it and, um, then it's official. Um, is there a survey that has to happen and all that? Is that, you guys spell out that process as well?
Yeah, the, um, I'll go back. So the final pledge will include legal descriptions of parcels and easements. And so, yeah, they'll have to go
Okay.
hire a surveyor and get, get all that squared away and then file with the county.
Perfect.
They got twenty thousand square feet on that lot, so it'll split any which way they want.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Okay. So it's just that easy. That's the easiest planning commission meet, meeting we've had in a long time.
Now, yeah.
It was a pleasure.
That might be it.
Okay, uh, if there's nothing else, do we have a meeting next month?
Um, August, or no, July. Do we have one next month?
We don't currently have any land use applications scheduled or even submitted. Is that true?
Right. We don't Yeah, I think so. We've just been doing some pre apps, but nothing.
Is the application that was withdrawn here, is it just off the table altogether or is it just pushed out?
It's off the table.
Okay. Yep, well.
So my question to you all is, um, you know, there are, there is this park and recreation area discussion, but, um, hopefully we can have some time in the near future. Um, do you want to schedule a July meeting just for that discussion or do you wanna, um, punt that to whichever next meeting? You know, assuming we get a land use application that would get scheduled for August, um, we could move everything to August. What do you guys wanna do?
I'd recommend pushing it to August at the very least unless, unless July has some meeting that we have to have, but I wouldn't. I don't, I don't need to meet for a meeting sake, and I don't think Ryan or anybody else does either. I think, so.
I'm good with that. I just want to reemphasize the importance of getting this into some type of code and or municipality code because I would like to, before the next big development comes in front of our desk, I'd like to have something, uh, prepared and ready to go so that we can support the growth in extracurricular or co-curricular activities that utilizes different space than just the school district's fields.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I would, you know, we, we tend to meet sort of just almost as a zoning board rather than a planning commission, which, uh, you know, which is fine, but I mean, I, I agree with Ryan. I mean, I think it was such a great thing that he brought up. Um, and it seems like such a a great project for a planning commission. And, you know, I know that the staff is way over burdened and maybe this is something that, um, you know, as a subcommittee of, of commissioners could take on or, you know, one, you know, somebody could volunteer to look stuff up or, you know, whatever, whatever it is, just so it doesn't get, you know, like he said, put off until there's, you know, two more big.
Yes.
Uh, two, two more big, um, developments and, and, you know, that's, that would be an argument for having a, a meeting. When we don't, you know, maybe we don't have anything else on the agenda. Maybe that's a good time to talk over some research that could get done in conjunction with staff, uh, or something in the meantime, just, just an idea, or if you know, if, if meeting is making your workload worse than I, and then I also, I, that makes sense too. And, and I find a way to, I just want to put that out there.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I don't mean to discourage you from meeting just because we staff are busy at all. Um, if, if you are, if, if a quorum of you would be available and, um, willing and wanting to meet on July, what would be that Wednesday? One, two, three, July nineteenth, um, at two P M would be this normal time now. Um, we can definitely get that set up and, um, yes, there's, there is absolutely no rule against, um, you know, planning commissioners doing the research that staff doesn't have time to do on these types of issues. I think if, um, if and when we would go about that task, it would really just be, you know, the first step is just looking through other cities, um, zoning codes and land division standards and looking at how they, um, regulate and require park land dedication or open space, you know, provision or, um, recreational facility provision. Um, just anything relevant to that. Um, and specifically, we want to make sure that we get some examples from other Oregon cities because Oregon has some, um, more specific requirements from the state for like residential development standards. Um, so yes, if, if any one of you or a subcommittee of you wanted to go about doing that research, we, um, would certainly appreciate it and we could include it in the packet, um, for the next meeting if we received it like a week in advance of the meeting. Um, so yeah, should we, do you want to decide right now whether or not to go ahead and hold that July meeting? Um, or do most of you still want to push it to August? Either is fine with us, but I can't promise that we will be able to get all that research done by the July meeting.
Or would there be an option to make the July meeting a, a meeting for whoever is interested in discussing that, um, and, and reviewing some research on it. That way it maybe doesn't have to have quorum if there's a lot of people that don't want to go.
I'm fine with either one. Uh, I'm, I'm fine to meet in July. I also, um, you know, if there are no approvals coming in the month of July or no applications, it sounds to me like because it, I, I'm not an expert in this by any means, and I would like to, I would like expert folks to research things just so I don't go into some just weird web of Google, uh, and, and figure out what's, what's, you know, what are some good ideas or that kind of stuff. So, uh, if the city believe that they could come with a prepared, organized and thoughtful, you know, discussion topic, then I think it would be to our best interest to wait an additional thirty days, uh, so that a quality product comes, uh, to us to allow us to begin the planning processes of that. I, I would be more in favor of that if, if time is what's needed, I think that that's fine. Um, I just want to continue to keep this on a regular prioritized conversation because this does need to remain at the front of the table.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I have a question, uh, with, with this parks and rec uh, discussion, I guess it is. Being that the school district carries the burden of all of high school sports, probably ninety percent of youth sports. Is there a way, uh, uh, interim mechanism that we can divert parks dollars to them? Uh, to offset maintenance costs or to increase capacity or to do these things? Because currently they have they, we, I'm on the school board, Ryan's superintendent, uh, has an abundance of ground on the north part of the school district property that is, is phased somewhat out into, hey, we want baseball fields or football fields, soccer fields and that kind of thing. But the, the thing that's holding us back is the dollars. Um, but if we're we are, we do collect a parks S D C, right? On new construction?
Yes.
And currently that either goes to Wade Creek Park, this one here next to us.
Yeah.
Or a couple of the neighborhood parks.
Restricted to, um, you know, adopted city park projects.
So, so maybe a bona fide like joint venture or intergo, intergovernment agreement. I know there's one that exists already to a certain extent out there on that property, but, and I'm just thinking out loud here and, and we can, you know, put this in the big discussion of, of, of what we have eventually. But we can go up there at any given night. There's hundreds of youth playing and a lot of them are living in the houses that have been developed recently. So, um, there's an argument there. And obviously I have a biased interest again because I'm on the school board and my kids participate in a lot of this stuff, so.
Well, you bring up a good question there for, for me. Is, uh, the city funds only for city parks or do we have to own the property to put money into it?
For S D C park funds?
Yeah. Would you use that money? Does that have to be voted on by a certain body as to where it goes? And does it have to be city property or school property is, uh, available?
I believe it has to be city property, but I'm not sure about that. And it does have to get voted on in the form of, um, the adopted capital improvement plan.
See what you did.
Yep. Okay, well, I would say kind of to echo Ryan's, uh, thoughts of if we can put together legitimate, uh, scope or agenda that we can come to discuss with, you know, methodical information. I, I'm all for it. I'm, I can make my, myself available. Um, July, August, whenever. So.
Yeah.
That sound, okay?
I, I prefer August, but if, if it's later in that the later part of July, I think.
Okay. Why don't we see what kind of, uh, ground you guys can cover on the planning staff between now and then? Maybe we can pencil it in and then just bump it if we have to. Is there any issue with that?
So we'll pencil in the, so we're gonna schedule a July meeting. Is that what I'm hearing? And whoever can attend, you know, anytime we schedule a meeting, we ask for your, um, R S V P the week before. So if it looks like there won't be a quorum, we will let you know. And if a subcommittee wants to meet, that's totally fine. Um,
Well, Taylor, let's rephrase the question. You, you claimed that we're at the moment understaffed and overworked was the quote. And so, uh, in your professional opinion, will the planning commission get a better quality product July fifteenth or August? Cause really, okay, then, then let's plan for August as meeting number one of the Parks and Rec conversation.
Right for Parks discussion. Okay. That, I think that's the best way to go. And in the meantime, if any, if any of you decide to do a little research that you want to send our way, um, by all means, that's super helpful.
Okay. That sounds good. All right, any other discussion we need?
I've got one.
Oh, you do?
I want to apologize for being late. Um, I've had a really, really tough month. I'm in the hospital. Um, so that's why I'm kind of worried about July. Because we set up a cruise. Run a cruise. So I'm kind of babying myself. So I looked at my wife today and I go, the time is, and she goes, she told me, I go, oops.
It's okay.
So anyway, so I just want to make sure you guys know, if I don't show up for something, I make sure everybody knows, oh, they never know. I don't, I usually don't publicly say stuff like this. But I, I just don't. I don't know. I just no one did it before.
Yeah.
We should add, but not me. So.
Well, you take whatever time you need and just keep us in the loop so we, we know when, when to expect here or not.
That's, I keep him in. When I talked to Brian, I told him unless something drastically happens.
Okay.
I was gonna be here. But I left that wide open. So every, you know, he, he was expecting me, right? Yeah, same.
Okay.
So. So I be, I do better.
Yeah. All right, thanks, Tom.
Paul, just real quick, want to keep you guys updated on, uh, pretty big meeting that's coming up for the city on Monday night for city council. Um, ordinance two zero two three dash O O five, which is essentially addressing public, uh, camping on public property. Uh, we're expecting a pretty big turnout on that one and we're going to be discussing that ordinance. I, I don't know if you're, you're up to speed on that or not, but there's a house bill that goes into effect. I believe on July first and we need to have something in place for a city if we want to regulate camping on public property. So we can discuss afterwards. I don't want to take up time of the meeting here, but essentially that's going on. We're going to expect probably a pretty large turnout on Monday night.
Have you guys?
Uh, that's at seven o'clock.
At seven o'clock, yeah.
Yeah. Why do you expect a large turnout?
Based on, uh, we've gotten some letters from folks throughout the week. That's part of our council packet and then just overall, um, murmur of the public right now out there, social media, phone calls, things along those lines.
Yeah. Has a location been selected?
To be discussed.
Okay.
There are really, it's got to be something that the city owns.
Okay.
And it's, uh, they've had discussed two places, either the portal over by Timber Park or the parking lot in front of the fire station.
I lost that all.
And that's hence, that's a big part of the conversation then as well too.
And those are the only two city owned spots that are available for camping?
Those are the ones that I believe the, uh, cities come up with is the best options there.
Okay.
Code enforcements, code enforcement recommends not the portal because it's difficult to manage. And, and the, the recommendation is between to allow it between nine P M and seven A M. So it's a set time, set place. We need to have something, time, place, manner in place if we're going to have an ordinance addressing camping on public property.
And you what?
Seven A M.
Sure.
How are other jurisdictions?
They're, they're all doing the same, same thing. I've been watching other city council meetings. It's
They're all scrambling.
Yeah, everyone's scrambling.
Has the city done any, um, financial analysis of what it will take to enforce code, uh, on?
Not, not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Um, and, and if, if, if this isn't in place, we would need to be able to enforce or, or to address any public camping, you know, one way or the other, we've, we've got to address something should the action arise.
Yeah, and I completely understand the law. I was just curious if there's a feasibility for the city to consider purchasing a location and in the long run ultimately saves money on the potential, uh, security, policing, damage, all of the other things that come with public camping. If there's, if there's a, if there's a return on investments in an alternative strategy such as hypothetically purchasing a hotel across from a gas station, uh, or something of that nature, that's hypothetically purchasing a hotel across from a gas station, uh, or something of that nature, that's more in line with.
Yeah, I think to meet the requirements, our understanding is a set time and place is what's, what would be.
The minimum requirements, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, if I could give you, cause I won't be there, if I could give you the school district's perspective on it, uh, our school district has worked incredibly hard um, to transform the culture of who we are as a school district and that includes sprucing up and looking more like a professional organization. And the school district's concerns with in front of the fire department is as we try to recruit prospective families who are moving into our community. The front door site of, uh, of, of public camping um, may be a detractor, uh, to families who are looking to invest sending their children to a community where that's, if, I don't know if you understand what I'm saying there, but yeah.
And so the concern from that standpoint would be if it's unenforceable then.
That's correct, which is.
If we are not able to get people out of the spot at seven A M.
That's correct, yeah. Yep. Which at this point, the school would assume would likely happen.
Okay, yeah, appreciate it.
Yeah.
It's a tough spot to be in. And this is state legislature and the governor probably signed off on it and everybody else.
Yeah, state house bill three one one five, I believe.
It's unfortunate that the, the small jurisdictions don't or ha- haven't been able to push back and say, how, how do we do this, I mean, we, there's gotta be jurisdictions that just supply water and plow the snow occasionally and, I mean, that's about it, you know?
Yeah, and we're not even being asked to do that.
Yeah, and now you're putting this on us, that's goes into a totally different realm of public health and mental health and
Yeah.
security and policing and everything else.
Right, and part of the concern is Portland has theirs, it goes into effect as well to July one and then it will, as I understand, will not be enforced until the middle of July. So they're gonna have something in place which may scatter, I mean, that's the fear.
Right.
The folks that are, are, uh.
I'm certain of that, and I understand the intent of the law, I really do, and, and I'm actually supportive of it. I just know that this community has worked so hard to clean itself up. And, uh, so then to consider putting, um, some vulnerable part of our population out in front, um, I think could potentially set back a lot of the great work that's been done by leaders like you.
And the counter to that, the part that we've got a way out is if we don't have something in place, we would have nothing enforceable
Right.
on the books, should people camp on city property, right here in front of city hall.
Yeah.
We would be open to a lawsuit if we try to enforce, yeah.
I'm, and I, that's why I think, I think it's necessary to have a designated location. If the only reason not to do the portal is because code is tougher to enforce, then that sets a pretty good precedence for really that, that you'll be evaluated on and that is, will it actually be enforced? And it's a pretty big gamble when you're putting it into someone else's saying.
Right, yeah, appreciate it.
Um, I would just add, you know, just to add to any of this, the, it's worth noting that it's not just a state, um, it's not just a state bill that, that Oregon dreamed up, it, it came out of a legal action in, in Boise and it was upheld by the um, ninth district court and then it, and it was taken all the way to the supreme court who refused to hear it, so we're not the only state, Utah um, is passing it, you know, it's, it's
Yeah.
it's meant to, to not. Yeah, I mean, I, I just think it becomes, it's, oh, why is the state doing this to us and it's, it's
Yeah.
it's not statewide and it, it's not something that we can fight and win, it's, you know, it's, which is, I mean, I, I agree that it's, it's an undue burden on really small communities like what, you know, what, where the city doesn't own a lot of land, it doesn't make sense really to me how it's played out, but it's the reality of it is what we're confronted with, not whether, kinda, whether we like it or not.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I agree.
Okay. Thanks, Paul.
Sure thing.
All right, with that, let's go ahead and adjourn at, uh, two thirty five.
Nice job.
I think so.
Nice job, everyone.
Public hearing.
Thanks, Tara.
Yes, okay. I said we'll jump out of the public hearing and.